Good evening, we will call the meeting to order. And welcome to the November twenty-second Seager Springs Public School School Board Meeting. And welcome, and as you can tell, we don't have microphones or speaking, so we're going to project our voices. We're going to be in the drama team tonight, so here we go. All right, so if we could begin by standing for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where we live today. One nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, and we will call through Secretary Slager.
Yes, Trustee Bowser.
Here.
Trustee Revard.
Here.
Trustee Vanderheide.
Here.
Treasurer Gilmore.
Here.
Secretary Slager, here. Vice President Schochner.
Here.
President Reed.
Here. Thank you, and we have established a vote forum, and we will move on to the adoption of the agenda, and I would entertain a motion.
Go move.
For any discussion?
So we are still waiting for the parent to arrive who will be participating in the closed session. So if we can ask gratitude, we can add particular items, and moving down the agenda until they really make it. They try to make a commitment, so they're doing their best.
So we will go when we get the invitation.
Thank you for the next agenda item.
All right, so we have flexible amendments, or do we have any further discussion? Having none, Vice President Schochner.
Yes.
Secretary Slager.
Yes.
Treasurer Gilmore.
Yes.
Justice Vanderheide.
Yes.
Justice Revard.
Yes.
Justice Bowser.
Yes.
President Reed.
Yes.
The agenda is adopted with that one piece of flexibility. That brings us to gratitudes. Would you like to go first?
I have a couple, actually. So the first one I'll talk about is I had the pleasure of going to one day of the latest M A S B conference. I was called to the concert. It's been a long day. And it was wonderful, and I took a lot of notes, which I have left at my house. So but the biggest thing that really stayed with me was the, one of the speakers, and his basic message was, "Love first, teach second." So teach, like, the kids, show the kids the love, show them, create a relationship with them, show them that you're in their corner first, then you talk about the math, the English, the science, et cetera, et cetera. And he had a very compelling story. I know Ms. D brought his book to share with us, and I believe she, they're probably gonna talk about it a little bit, too. I requested that it get put in the library, in the public library, so I haven't read it yet. So that was the first thing, thank you to the district for allowing me to participate in that, because it was, I think I said I cried three times, three or four times. I texted Heidi, I was like, "I'm sobbing over here." It was, that particular speaker was just, yes, hit me hard. And the second thing was, I appreciate the drama program. All three of my kids were in the play last week and loved it, and I loved watching it. And they just got, they just announced the cast for the musical coming up in February, I think, that's Into the Woods, and all three of my kids are in that, too. So I just, it's, there's some issues with some of my kids that some of you know about, and it's helped their mental health to be involved in this program, and I appreciate it every, every year. And in the last couple of years, where the drama program was unable to go because of COVID, or we weren't open, or whatever, has been difficult, and I'm so happy that we're, we're back in the swing of things. Those are my gratitudes.
Do you want us to talk about the M A S B, or do you, I'm not sure.
We can do that, we can do that, but you've got, you know, a little bit for, for now. But my gratitude for today is just, thank you for, Scott, for keeping with Monday Tuesday being off. I just, I really am happy that we're being proactive and not really reacting to everybody. And I just, the deep clean, it just was saturated, and our teachers are so tired. And I ran into two teachers from two different neighboring districts, and they just, they wish their superiors were doing that, because they are exhausted. So I just applaud you for that, and I, I took that, it's something even after COVID, the deep cleaning, that we just do standard cycle, and so, thank you for that.
Thank you, everyone, so thank you for taking your time to go to the M A S B.
Do you have a letter that I received of the athletic director, Michael Brad, from the Whit High School, that I wanted to read? There really is a gratitude towards the district, so. It was dated November seventeen, twenty twenty-one. Here is for Scott Smith and the Seager Springs Board of Education. First off, on behalf of the good public schools, I want to congratulate your football team on another successful season and their twenty twenty-one district championship. I would like to also extend our sincerest condolences on the passing of your beloved teacher and coach, Mr. Kevin Markness. The purpose of this letter is to applaud Athletic Director Matt Moffett, head coach Justin Polka, his coaching staff, the entire football program. Upon your team's arrival to Grand Match on Saturday, I was given a sympathy card for the loss of our own beloved teacher and coach Marcus Bray. The card was signed by each member of the Red Hot Football Team, and included gift certificates to one of our local restaurants. Both Coach Zimmerman and I both got words by an incredibly kind gesture. Our team and our community were grieving last week. Your program was fully aware, because they, too, were grieving just nine weeks earlier. I cannot commend Matt and Gus enough for their toughness to do something like that before heading into a competitive matchup on the football field for a regional championship. Truly, that says a lot about those who keep having their leadership positions. It is clear that they fully understand their role in educational athletics and their position serving as role models for young people. They are teaching your student athletes true life lessons, care, compassion, kindness, and sportsmanship. Matt and Gus have represented well in the Red Hot community extremely well, as they truly exemplify purpose, pride, and potential. With appreciating gratitude, Michael Brad, Athletic Director of the Red Hot School. So I am grateful for what people like Gus, people like Matt, for our athletes, for our coaches, because it's not just those small moves, it really extends across the district, so. That's why I'm grateful for this.
No, I was thinking, I'm grateful with that, just the parents that stepped up and helped pull that off, and even do a little bit of research about what restaurant to even get the gift card to, and things like that, so.
And I'm crying again.
Okay. Well, moving on to our consent items, and I would entertain a motion for as presented.
So move.
Support. Vice President Schochner.
Yes.
Secretary Slager.
Yes.
Treasurer Gilmore.
Yes.
Justice Vanderheide.
Yes.
Justice Revard.
Yes.
Justice Bowser.
Yes.
President Reed. Yes, consent items are approved as presented. Full session or still on hold? So we'll wait until we get the sign for that. That brings us to discussion, and our first discussion item is Neowal House eighty-four fifty point zero six regarding the COVID nineteen vaccination testing case coming in the house.
So this item really is on hold right now. We have been watching the initial emergency temporary standard that OSHA put out back in November, November five, I think it was, that they published that standard. From that time, multiple agencies were sharing with districts that it was really in their best interest to be fully prepared in the event that the standard actually was moving forward. Currently, it's sitting in Sixth Circuit Court, waiting for the determination of its legality. And so, along with those lines of work, Neowal put forward some, a couple of different policy drafts for districts to consider in the event that something like the ETS is actually identified as being illegal and fully required for implementation. So really, the language that is shared with me is just an early, an early look. I, interestingly enough, got an email late in the day on Friday from Chris Glass, who works at I S D, so let's say that he is out for us. And he shared that, at this point in time, my OSHA is not planning to follow suit with OSHA's ETFs. So, meaning that they're not planning to adopt their language directly, which gives us some wiggle room as far as deadlines go. So the recommendation, as of late in the day on Friday, was just to hold. Don't take any action, don't, you know, don't collect any vaccine information, push pause on your testing protocol, and that type of thing. But, you know, it was the first time that I'd received any communication as far as pausing this work, and it was after we'd already sent the, sent the information. So we determined that it would be appropriate just to leave it there for discussion. We would not give any action on the policy recommendations. On to wonders.
I have a wondering, one, because this, this standard, I think the way Neowal's got it proposed is really just say, "We're gonna follow my OSHA." But I guess my wondering is, we follow my OSHA already. So how, how does this protect us different? I guess I'm just surprised that we're gonna say that we're gonna follow it in regard to this, when in fact, we follow them for everything. I'm just confused as to why the necessity for it, I guess.
Yeah, I think the, this is a multifaceted situation. And it could be the case that people were not willing to follow the my OSHA standards, if we have employees that were not willing to follow those. And so by having board policy in place, those would be just one more measure that could say, "You're not following board policy." And then move forward with some type of progressive disciplinary action.
Okay. All right, I guess that's the piece that, that confused me. So if we had roofers that decided they weren't gonna tie off while they were working a loft, we don't have a policy against that, but they would be in violation of my OSHA. So that's where I just, it doesn't have to be board policy, they're in violation of safety rule. That's what I just was confused at, why there had to be a specific policy for this.
Yeah, and that's a great question, but those roofers are not our contractors.
Sure, I, that's just an example, I mean, we probably, we used to have janitorial staff, we have chemicals that would require gloves, but I mean, this is just as an example of,
Yeah.
of a my OSHA rule that we don't have a policy on as a board, so.
Yeah.
That was just my wondering, I guess.
The thinking really was, this is unique enough, that there was merit to having policy language in place that helps provide those guardrails for staff and make the expectations clear. But the policy language also comes with a company set of administrative guidelines, and also comes with a set of communication documents that districts can use to share with their staff. And all of those pieces tie together.
I think it definitely was wise to, to put a pause. I think that it makes sense, you know, with where things are, are at currently, so. I appreciate that, that that happened. Are you thinking bringing this before the board again, just kind of depending on how that goes, or do you have a timeline in mind?
I do not, really, it's up to my OSHA at this point. Well, it's actually up to the Sixth Circuit Court, first and foremost, and then it would be up to my OSHA after that. You know, what, by, by not doing anything with this item this evening, it may require us to have a special meeting at some point in time in the future, if, you know, they drop, my OSHA drops a standard that requires us to act quickly from a tight line perspective. But I, you know, I can't, I can't predict that, so we'll have to sort of work it out. Yeah, we're in the moment. I'm both, well, Sixth Circuit Court does, but then also what, what steps my OSHA might take as well. Yeah. More about the, can't, can't predict.
At least we have it for us, what the meeting would go to. Next discussion item is the National School Board Association Advocacy or Institute Announcement.
You want me to?
I can start.
Okay.
So we have, I want us, a board member who is willing to travel to Washington, DC to have our voice, local voice heard, and to be the person in the room listening. And she's already played that role for us, and it's Ms. D Bowser. And so we do need, according to board policy, we need to approve that tonight, so she can book her travel plans and pick that note, so.
Yeah, so the Kent I S D School Board Association put out an opportunity for Kent County Board members to apply for a scholarship to receive their tuition to be reimbursed for the conference. Ms. D took the time to, the energy to put, put the, put the scholarship application together, and they notified us last week that she had actually, they'd selected to receive one of the scholarships from the Kent I S D, and so that is about a seven hundred dollar stipend that she'll receive that will help out for the costs of, of the participation at the conference. And then the district would pick up travel costs associated with the ten dollars. I also included in the board book just a copy of that policy that provides an outline for our guidance on board member travel for conferences and committees.
That I have to say, Ms. D is, she doesn't agree, she's in a room with everybody that she might not even agree with, but she has a very nice way of maybe pristine. No one's, she just does a great job at that, but, but she definitely is a voice for us as a board. So we appreciate that, thank you.
I did have a wondering on this.
Yeah.
Not, not about you, but the way the, the way that the thing reads, it talks about just being reimbursed, does that mean that somebody that wants to do this has to front all the money in the future? Or is that just written?
Front or, or fronted persons.
Right, because it talks about they, if they're approved, that these are reimbursable on submission. So if I wanted to do this in the future, I probably couldn't, because I wouldn't be able to front all that money. Is that just, am I reading it weirdly, or?
So the reimbursement, yeah, the reimbursement piece would be like for meals and that type of thing.
Okay.
But we can pay for the travel expenses.
Gotcha. Okay.
If you put it on a credit card, it's quick, get your credit card in. It's, "I need it paid by the next month." All right, thank you. All right, we have a working on that session. Okay. So we move on to public comments, and this is the time where the board would entertain public comments. Concerns that would like us to hear, don't be offended, we won't be answering tonight. Mr. Smith will be following up with you. So we have a place, a little podium right there at the center, so if you have a public comment, if you're registered, we'll hear them now.
The first public comment is from a show.
Welcome to Center Stage.
Good evening. I'd like to start out tonight by giving you the definition of pornography and sexual edict. Says sexually explicit videos, photographs, writings, or the like whose purposes to elicit sexual arousal. And then Mary Ann wants your definition is, one, the depiction of erotic behavior as the pictures are written, intended to cause sexual excitement. Two, materials such as these photographs that depict erotic behavior and is intended to cause sexual excitement. Last part of the review, a rather impressive document, but it's on a choice of the required reasons. So was the modesty to his back is clearly incorrect. On Seager Springs website, under what the school boards do, it states, "Specific provisions in the revised school code also cite responsibilities to school boards in areas such as, and one of the things is setting the curriculum versus funding schools, and two, employing a separate and covered and structured teachers for support personnel." So if the school board is responsible, according to the revised school code, the separate curriculum versus funding in the schools, but I think that if the majority of the school board deems this content in sports, unacceptable, there should be renewed. That's all for this, there's pornography. The curriculum board can talk about challenging our students to reach their full potential by giving them higher grade and adult-oriented material. We can do that without giving them the authority to read books that contain pornography. She also spoke about the two different sources that have suggested the books that we have read experts from. Clearly, we are not trustworthy or reliable sources, thus to use. Even if a book has a practical word, it does not really fit the suitable for children's imagination. To rationalize that these books should be used in the needs of some, but not others, as a whole face fly, we have to be against the decency of our community. Now, in the title, adult-oriented books that do not contain pornography could be used to challenge students to reach their potential. This material is still available today. The first time we had some access right to use is in October, so it's been a month, and all these books are still there. We don't understand why these books are taped off the shelf until we are justificated. If the student can have to speak to us on the person, but we didn't have a phone call for about a better time, we wouldn't let them keep, or let them have access to them. We would not steal the material while it was investigated. So again, according to the provisions in the revised school code, it states that it cites their responsibilities to school boards, you're the school board. That's the critical. I think sometimes we recognize that teachers and staff are good for us, and children, not that we would care for them.
Okay, the next person sharing public comment is Carol P. from Platoon Township.
When God is separated from government, the state would have to be scrubbed of all Christian convictions and failings. Re-interpret Christian holidays, man-school prayers, self-careless and nativity plays turn all things Christian into secular in line with the government. Hitler always said that the best way to conquer your enemy is to divide them. State would take over every aspect of people's lives, from holidays to marriage, blessings of Mother, Father Earth, or Mother Earth or Father Sky would replace the God of the Bible. Nancy Pelosi recently quipped that Mother Earth is mad at us, referring to the rise of weather disasters around the globe. With God and religion moved from government, removed from government, the values of Hitler's socialism filled the vacuum. The church would increasingly become the enemy of the state. This happened under the code words such as freedom, peace, fairness. The people were assured these changes were made for their best interests in mind. The greater good of Germany eclipsed individual freedoms and the right to opposition. Everyone is expected to be in lockstep with accepted cultural values and goals. Those who oppose will receive a gate of price. I represent four grandkids, four grandsons, in two different school districts, and I care about their future, but more importantly, what's going on now? We are Christians, and we believe in Jesus Christ. What you are defending with your evil indoctrination of a curriculum is child abuse. You're bandied together, had your meetings, been coached on what to say, more than parents that have very right to be involved. And I now say this prayer for God and God. Lord God, please flood the school with your spirit, be with each child, protect them with your strongest angels, and guard their hearts and minds against evil information and mandates that do them harm physically and mentally. I pray for the teachers, they are all under demonic attacks that shroull the truth, leading them to be a part of teaching lies and negating those who believe in Christ. This is a spiritual battle for the hearts and minds of our nation. I pray for this school board, administration, anyone associated in these, in these decisions. Lord, flood their being with your truth, cause them to know the truth, and turn from support of evil wicked policies put into the present curriculum, critical race pornography in the libraries, twisted bathroom policies, and encouraging sexual perversion activity, and anything else associated with this. So. And if it be your will, remove any member who continues to support them. In Jesus' name, I pray, amen.
Thank you.
The last registered public comment is by Carol P. from Platoon Township.
I confess with all penitence.
Yes.
I would just like to use my time tonight to pray for everyone here in our country. Lord, we come to you tonight with a prayer of thanksgiving. We are thankful for our founding fathers who chose to build this nation on your word, and for the freedom and protection you bestowed upon us. We thank you for the many blessings you have given us, blessings such as an abundance of food, an ability to earn a living, the way we choose, gas and electric to keep us warm in the winter and cool in the summer, a roof over our heads, and doctors to heal us, as one was said. We are truly a nation of blessings from God. But Lord, we also acknowledge that we have taken your blessings for granted, and we have turned our backs on you. Instead of continuing to improve you in our lives, we have gone astray. Prayer has been removed from schools only to be replaced with pornography. Our nation of nudity has become a nation of division. Over the past two years, we have turned a hatred of one another rather than war. Lord, we ask that you change our hearts. We ask for guidance and direction from you to help us treat others with love and respect. We also ask that you lead the school boards, teachers, teachers' unions, and principals to do them a morally right thing for our children. Convict their hearts and direct their paths to, to do what is good and right. Lord, it is obvious that we are in a fight of good versus evil. Riots in the streets are being encouraged, stealing has been accepted in some parts of our country, illegal immigrants are being brought in against the law, and law enforcement has been thrown out the window. This can only be the work of an evil agenda led by unvowled mad. We ask that you stop the evil that is overtaking our country. We ask that you put obstacles and confusion in the way of people of power who want to destroy our land. We also ask that these powerful workers of wickedness be removed, and that they be replaced with people who stand for your righteous cause. And lastly, we ask you to open the eyes of the people everywhere. We reveal the truth to them and expose the evil that is happening here and around the world. Give us some courage, strength, and your wisdom to fight for our God-given freedom. And give us a heart of thanksgiving for the beautiful country you have graciously blessed us with. Thank you, Lord, for hearing our prayer tonight, in Jesus' name we pray, amen. And I would just like to say one other thing to the board. I just want you to consider what you are contributing to. CRT and all these mandates are not for the people's health. This is about control, and the longer you follow law with this, the more control we're going to see. None of us are immune, neither us nor who on the board. And I don't know anyone that would be here, but I don't know what news you watch or anything like that. I know there's the mainstream media, and there's other media out there. Do some research, don't just stick to one or two channels, look around, even if it's weird, strange, just listen to it a couple times and see what you think. Things are happening over in Austria and Australia that are unbelievable. Things are happening over in Austria and Australia that are unbelievable. I mean, people are being locked down and also being taken to camps just for not being vaccinated or having COVID. I mean, it's scary, it's really scary. Just look around and see what's going on. Thank you.
Thank you.
So if this is the board voting action, we'll enter into the work session discussion and we'll bump action down. Do we need to motion that?
Yeah.
Because it's changing the agenda.
Yes.
I think we have to motion that. Okay, I'll take the motion. Go forward. Support. Motion on the table to the action down into our work session. So. The work session, Vice President Shoffner.
Yes.
Secretary Slaker.
Yes.
Judge Gilmore.
Yes.
Justice Bean Hyde.
Yes.
Justice Revard.
Yes.
Justice Bowser.
Yes.
President Reed.
Yes.
Or maybe the agenda and we'll leave it to the work session. Okay.
The first item in the work session is a collection of seven work policies that are part of the body that NIOA publishes every fall and every spring. This collection of policies, nothing is dramatic or earth shattering. This is our first read on the policies. We'll look at them again in December and then ask for approval in January, so that gives us a full allotment of time to take a look at them. So really, tonight is about seeing if anybody has any questions or wonders. There's an overview that I linked in the workbook. There's also a collection of definitions that NIOA drafted for us. And then each recommended policy is linked into the agenda that includes any language that's been redlined. And then any new language is written in the read. So we can go into more detail in December on specific items. If anybody has any additional questions around some of the background in terms of the why we have to change.
I guess that's time.
I don't have anything. Up to you. I don't think it's going to change necessarily.
Time's up.
Time's up. Anything else? There's a power alarm going off. That here. One of ours.
Not one of mine.
I haven't touched my. I haven't touched my either, but that doesn't mean it. It stopped. Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, so that was our legal policy that brings us to our administrative org chart.
Okay, so you have a collection of three pages of documents. The first is an organizational chart that we've been working on really for four months or so. Just taking a look at our organization to determine how best we're distributing workload and responsibilities. You'll note that we have made some adjustments in a couple of areas, but then also just provided some clarification across the entire organization. So first and foremost will be the structure of the administrative cabinet. And the proposal we're looking at right now is having that be a four-person team. So consisting of the deputy superintendent for business and operations, an assistant superintendent for academic services, an assistant superintendent for student services, and then a director of human services. The reason for those changes, those proposed changes, is really as we look at the flow of the organization. Debbie McQuillan said it very well at the beginning of the school year when she was meeting with staff. She made the comment that effective leadership is really about providing support for people and for leaders and staff members as needed, but also to provide accountability. And so the shift to the structure to design those two assistant superintendent positions, one around the student services, the other around the academic services, will be just to help me in the work of providing support and accountability measures for the rest of our team. And so there's just a differentiation between the role as an assistant superintendent and the role of a director or a principal. So that's really the cause for the change in the academic services position and the student services position. The reason for the change with the deputy superintendent title is that in that role, that deputy superintendent will actually oversee five different directors. So they'll oversee our director of facilities and community enrichment, our director of food service, our director of maintenance, our director of technology, and our director of transportation. An additional change that you'll see is the facilities and community enrichment director's title. That title change really came about through the process of identifying that finalist for the facilities director position. If you recall, when Kent Simon retired, we took a look at that role and thought it would be wise for us to break that role up to try to identify some more focused bodies of work for individuals to do. So Kent Simon's previous role was the director of facilities, maintenance, and operations. So in that role, he oversaw transportation. The business department has always had oversight of the food service team. If the technology piece was something that KISD had oversight of. And so our thinking is bring all of those director positions in under the deputy superintendent role. And the change that we're recommending or that we're looking at as far as the facilities piece goes. Russell Bray has extensive amount of experience working on a variety of people-centered projects in his work at Calhoun University and his previous work at other small colleges. And so because the bulk of our community engagement is around the utilization of our facilities, we thought it made a tremendous amount of sense to include that community enrichment into his title. You know, his job is going to be one where there's a key focus on providing outstanding experiences for the people utilizing our facilities. Whether that we are students, our staff, our guests, or our community members who are using our facilities outside the role of school. And so for us, it just made a natural, made natural sense to pull that community focus out of the HR position and shift it over into Russell's position. So that's the, that's the big shift as far as the core administrative positions. The other position that you'll see, so as you'll see the campus kids director position. The heavier black lines represent both support and accountability measures. The lighter black lines really are more about supporting positions. So you'll see that the campus kids director position has a darker black line coming down from the assistant superintendent for academic services. So we really want to expand that program to provide more opportunity for academic support and enrichment, both before school and after school. But we also see that program as being a key program for using our facilities. And so we have a tie over to the director of facility enrichment. We also have a light line going to that position from our building administrative team, because we want those individuals to have input and direction on that campus kids program as well. And so another item of note, while the deputy superintendent for business and operations has a direct line of support for the technology director position, that position will also be directly supported for both support and accountability measures from our academic services assistant superintendent. Because we see technology really serving two purposes in the district. One, to provide just the global support for district technology operations, but it's also a key position as far as supporting academic services in terms of, you know, device management, assessment, data utilization, and access. And so we really see that as being a vital, very active, multifaceted relationship. The other piece that you see, it's the light yellow box. Now at the bottom of the chart, you'll see that there's a heavy line linking to MTSS from both our academic assistant superintendent for academic services, but also our assistant superintendent for human services. All the work that's being done by our MTS team, our MTSS team, really is supporting both our school improvement work, but it's also providing supports for our behavioral supports as far as our student behaviors go. And so really, that program, that body of work, will be equally supported by both the assistant superintendent for student services and the assistant superintendent for academic services. Can you see anything yet? Or Mark?
No, just maybe I mentioned that the MTSS work, and you may remember, I did a presentation a while ago about the continuous improvement that the state was making in shift to something called MYKIP. That's a whole child model, so it does ask us to look at more than just academic scores. It asks us to look at wellness in a very large category, I would say, for students. So that MTSS work really does support both what we do in academic services, but also much of the work in student services. So Stacy and I are pretty tied together with that work. And because we are a district that's using MTSS, it really does streamline people's scores.
Wonders or questions? I mean, part of this comes from the talent of the people that we have on the team. But it also comes from when people leave the team, you always have to look at how you can maximize the strengths of the people there. You know, so Matt's departure in June, with Ken's departure in October, with Weeks' retirement in January. You know, it just really gives you an opportunity to look and distribute responsibilities to people who have passion, have the opportunity. Any areas that just make sense with common groups and common resources. So if Jen was to win the Lotto and retire to the, you know, to a boat in the Caribbean, you know, I can't, we would not necessarily replace that position as an assistant superintendent. We'd reshuffle that and leave the people that we have. It's a fluid, moving model. It really accentuates the strengths of the people on the team.
Yeah, I can tell a lot of thought went into laying this all out. So I think this is super helpful to see and makes a lot of sense. So thank you for working hard on that. And I am really excited about the facilities community enrichment director position. I know facilities has been, in the past, at times, there has been some tensions there or some pickups. And I just love that we're being very intentional with that and really looking at that as an enrichment relationship piece. So good work on that.
So we're adding titles that we haven't added before. Are there any budgetary concerns with any of this?
No, the changes to the assistant superintendent positions and the deputy superintendent position would be minimal in terms of the salary step that goes for the, for the district. And so we would definitely be within, you know, it's, you know, we made, we made some adjustments to the director of human resources position. And yeah, it's, we didn't change the overall, the overall number, we did some shifting around of position to position.
And why the title differences, deputy and assistant?
So I did a lot of research around that. So it's really a merger of two trains of thought. If you look historically in educational settings, they would have a superintendent, an assistant superintendent, director positions, principal positions, assistant principal positions, dean of student positions. In the mid eighties, as you had to see a greater presence of private sector, corporate structure being integrated into school districts. You began to see designations such as deputy superintendent, associate superintendent. And so really, it's a merger of two different models. A standard educational approach to title designation and also the corporate or the private sector approach to title designation. The differences between the assistant superintendent roles and the deputy superintendent roles. The assistant superintendents are really responsible for programs. The deputy superintendent is responsible for departments. So it's just a slightly higher level, higher level designation of responsibility.
So in the big picture, if I'm a 10th grade social studies teacher, how does that affect?
If you were a 10th grade social studies teacher, you really would be impacted by the degree to which the work of myself, in this case of Jen and of Stacy, to provide the high school team with both support and accountability measures to help you be the best you can be. You know, it's really about creating conditions in which people can thrive, the best service of our students. And the prior model where I was leading all of that work individually, I just wasn't doing it justice. You know, I could not give, I could not provide the accountability measures for our principals to the degree to which I wanted. And so, you know, it was really a perfect storm of opportunity as we moved forward with the MTSS measurables, with the school improvement measurables, and the people that we have on the team. We will be able to do a better job supporting our building level leaders, providing them with clear measurables, providing PLC groups with their measurables. It really just, it provides more support and accountability so that we can maximize the work of our, of our district. Leadership is not just about support. It's also about accountability. And accountability doesn't mean attacking. It just helps people make focus on the things that are good.
That point, community-wise, how is this affecting somebody on the outside trying to get help or trying to have information? You know, is this something that we can utilize and understand where to go?
So to me, it depends on. So, to me, it depends on what it is that they're looking for. You know, if it's, if it really streamlines it into three channels, whereas before we had four channels. Between operations, academic services, student services, and then with the Human Resources position, we have, you know, community services. And to be honest, that was a difficult one to really define, you know, what are community services? Well, in our case, community services are about people using our buildings. And so it makes the most sense to have the person responsible for our facilities to also be the point person for that community enrichment piece. And so to me, it, it streamlines those calls that are coming into the office. If it's the student services piece, well, first, we try to, you know, have individuals, you know, identify what's the closest point to the, to the issue. So if it's a teacher issue or a movement issue, we can go there. If it's a global or mobile issue around student services or about academic services or operations, we can streamline the communication that way. I think the biggest game changer for this work as far as how most of our community members will be impacted will be the addition of that Facility and Community Enrichment Director position. You know, so all the individuals that were instrumental in the development of the pickleball courts up by the administration building, all those calls came through me. And, you know, it would often take me a couple of days to get to it. You know, I was the one that took the call from the contractor that came and cut down the holes. Just because we didn't really have anyone else to take that call. And so really by having those community enrichment opportunities go right to Russell, who will be working hand in hand with Vic and who will be working hand in hand with Chris, like that is a dynamic team that will really impact that, that student, that community staff experience.
So as far as communicating this out, you know, is that online? Is that via the district office? Put people in the right direction as far as for Facility Director?
Yeah, so this would really be, for the, for the majority of members of our team, they'll never see this. You know, you want your systems to be seamless. And so this would really, it shouldn't change things that much from a, from a routing of communication. What it really should, what it really should change is things as far as the streamline of the improvement of the experiences. By, by really, you know, by having one person focus on Facilities, Community Enrichment, by having one person, one person focusing on the maintenance of things, it really should just help us be much more streamlined in our response. And it's evolved, you know, so as we work it and we find that our needs for improvement, then this is, this is all just in a digital document. So, you know, I was moving things around today after we got feedback from the team this morning. You know, it has, our responses to our conditions have to be fluid because our conditions are changing all the time.
So the Director of Human Services is kind of a little lowly over in the corner.
Yeah, but that job is enormous.
I know. You should have little light lines everywhere, right? So, yeah, just an observation.
But I mean, they do, they do, they do staffing, they do recruitment, they do retention, they do evaluation, they do benefits, they do payroll, they do, yeah.
That was a good observation. Yeah. I really appreciate it, just, just.
Going back to that, sorry, the Director of Human Services, all the things you just listed, is there, under the Deputy Superintendent, there's a business team. Sorry, is the Director of Human Services team working there?
It's an army of water, jacket less than.
So we're going over all these things, it's just so much they can't do, but it's not too much for one person?
It's a learning place for me, just, I think of this position.
Right.
I think as we move forward, every person here, several new candidates, I think Ray Scott has been a solid role, will, will, will help identify those candidates and also look for new opportunities for building that position as well. And the one person that is part of the side to me does so incredibly much. And she's a lot to do with a lot of things, but I sort of, it's a lot, who knows? It is, you know, people don't, we're not, we don't work in silos, you know? So Amy McCarthy helps to work with communication coming out of HR. Art Gus helps, you know, work all, she's technically, the business team, you know, is, is critical in the work of, you know, helping to support HR function. So we really, there's a lot of interchangeable within that body of work.
Yeah, there is not a lack of support.
I think Jeff was trying to create some more boxes.
Yeah.
Wait, you just went over a list that was considerable. I was curious if.
I think it sounds like it might be a little influx, especially as Art transitions. Seems like you guys would build a lot, maybe some, some further boxes of development. But right at the moment, it's you and Kathy doing a lot. We appreciate it, thank you.
Thank you for this great opportunity. And it's also, you know, our principals are doing an amazing job supporting that work as well. Like there, it's, it really is, there's a large group of people working to support that mission.
And I think that was a part of my comment as far as the lighter lines. You know, it, really that Human Services captures everything. It really just, you know, you fill the page with, yeah, it'd be a spider web, exactly. So I can understand why it's that dark heavy line to you and then you're really, you know, two representatives.
There is never a hiring decision, a personal decision that's made on a, you know, everyone is people that's hired, all those people that's in this district, they're all, does amazing things, you know, so we think so. Could, could do with all the talent, for sure.
Very helpful.
You will, are we ready for our close session?
I would get a two motion at this time to move into the close session.
So, support.
Any section? Head on, Vice President Shocker?
Yes.
Secretary Slager?
Yes.
Spencer Gilmore?
Yes.
Justin Vander Heide?
Yes.
Justin Vard?
Yes.
Justin Bowser?
Yes.
Spencer Reed?
Yes.
We will move to the close session and return for our remaining agenda and. So the minutes can show, we're rolling back into open session at seven forty please. Our app, because of our flexible schedule, will jump to action items. And.
I don't know, we moved to put it after the work session.
After the work session.
So.
Okay, then we'll stay with that, alright. So with the work sessions, we have one item, one construction.
Sure, so the second part of the paper packet that you receive is a copy of some documents that we received from Triangle and GMB. My apologies for the small print, because initially these were thirty by fifty, thirty inches by fifty inches. But really what it does is it breaks down the projects. They're also linked into Word books, so you could blow them up on your screen. But it's a breakdown of the project, both at Cedar View and at the high school, to give you an idea as to the timelines for progression and completion, anticipated completion dates for the various projects that are going on. Because, you know, because we are using the buildings, the buildings are fully occupied during construction, the work has to be done in phases. And so, you know, it's just like when you're doing a home, home construction project, sometimes that can be a little bit challenging at, at best. And so what I wanted to do was just give you an idea as to which some of the different projects that were either currently in, in the process or that were going to be in process would be started or they would be completed. So the first document that you have is an overview map of Cedar View Elementary School. The first phase of construction will actually be occurring down at the lower right-hand corner of the document. So you'll see that there are three sections of the building that are designated as starting construction on or about March twenty eighth, twenty twenty-two, completing construction on or about June first, twenty twenty-two. That is, that includes renovation of the mechanical room. But what we're also doing is recapturing those two locker rooms, interior locker rooms at Cedar View, and creating classrooms out of those two spaces. So one of the spaces will be used as an art room. The other space will be used as a music room. So for our elementary specials. So the idea here is to, to bring all the elementary specials down to the ones, one area of the building, but also to better utilize those spaces. Currently, the two locker room facilities off that gym are not used. They're currently used for storage. They're not serving any academic purpose. And so by capturing those spaces, doing some renovation, creating two instructional spaces, it allows us to get a greater return on the investment. That square footage of those two, in those parts of the building. The next body of work at Cedar View is in the large section that is designated with the blue diagonal line. That construction phase will start on or about June first and will conclude August twenty-second, twenty twenty-two. That work involves the demolition of two classrooms, turning those two spaces into office space. So the upper left-hand, let's see, the, the upper left, the upper right-hand corner of the building, as you see it. Two of those spaces that are currently being used for classroom will become the office. That's why we're turning that space, they're currently lockers in which the classroom, we want to recapture those two classroom spaces. The rest of the building will get hit with finishes. So new floor coverings, new surfaces, new ceiling tile, those types of things. So the remainder of the building will be touched, with the exception of a couple of blocks of buildings that you'll see, or a couple of blocks of classrooms that you'll see. So the bulk of the building will be done on August twenty-two. Then what we're going to do is the two classrooms on the left-hand column of the building that are designated with orange, the renovation in those classrooms will start on or about September seventh and should be concluded by October third. While those two classrooms are, are remodeled, those two classrooms will be housed temporarily in the two new spaces that were created for music and art. And then, once those two classrooms are finished, then the students will head back to their original classrooms. And then if the two classrooms are checked and green, they'll transition to the temporary classrooms. Then we'll transition them back once their classrooms are done. Then the word of strike, uh, agenda, will transfer to the, uh, the extra classroom, then we'll transition back. And then lastly, the two classrooms that are checked in the darker hue, green, those will transition over to the new classrooms and then they'll come back at, at the conclusion of that construction, you know, on or about December twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-two. So remembering what we're doing in each of the classrooms, they're getting the new unit ventilators, we're doing the ductwork for the air conditioning. And then we're also doing flooring and just some other finishes in those spaces. So when you couple that with the furnishings, those classrooms will really have a nice fresh feel. And the work will be concluded as scheduled by December twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-two, just in time for students returning from. So that's the overview of Cedar View. Then the next picture that you see is.
I have a question. We're on page eight. So you said that we're, so we're moving the offices up into, we're taking two spaces in a different spot, and that's why we're putting the new classrooms. What's happening to the old office space?
So the office, the current office space will be utilized for student services.
Okay.
So right now we have people, counselors, social workers, individuals that don't have spaces. Judy Rao, our former speech therapist, the first day I met her, she said, hi, I'd like to show you my office slash closet. You know, she was in a small space off the library. So it's still a student-focused space, it's just repurposing that space for some different, more supportive, supportive of us.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, you're so welcome.
Quick question. Furniture-wise, are we saying you're all kind of tied in? Are we doing furniture on Cedar View or?
We are, yes. So that's. Yeah, our hope is to, we're still waiting to get our drawings back from Custer. But, you know, it's possible that we'll have, if we can make a change and bring furniture in, in April or spring break, that, you know, we just have to weigh out the pros and cons. You bring the new furniture in during the twenty-one, twenty-two school year, or you bring the new furniture in as we, you know, as we complete spaces. So we'll work with the team from Triangle and GMB as well to determine a timeline that makes the most sense for that, for that process. So when you look at the high school, that's a little bit of a more dynamic body of work. And note that this is just the initial, the initial body of construction. So this does not include the other, the auxiliary gym, the school store, some of those other things that we'll be doing. And we also do the beach project starting in the twenty-three, twenty-four school year. So, you know, as, as you go through, currently Phase One is under construction right now. That's the transition of the media center into the new administrative section of the building, but also creating that student services hub, right there in the main part of the building. So remember that was one of the keys. We wanted to create access for students to the student services programs, the counseling programs and that. We didn't want to have them have to come through the main office. We wanted it to have that be accessible just for the, the core academic hub of the building. And so that work is actually scheduled to be completed by June three, twenty twenty-one. So our goal is to have that space completed and also the addition off the cafeteria. Both of those two spaces will be completed by June three. The idea is for us to be able to reoccupy those two spaces over the summer so that everything is ready to go for students as they start in the fall. The next phase then will be Phase Two, which is the academic wing. That includes the two additional classrooms. We're expecting, we're anticipating the, sorry, the eight additional classrooms. We're anticipating that those classroom spaces will be done by June three as well. So they'll be occupiable for the fall. But all of those classrooms that are checked and cleaned, those are all giving basic level, new heating, cooling systems, doing some flooring, resurfacing, that type of thing. And so those classrooms again are going to be done either in phases, as noted in the charts. Some of the classrooms will be done over the summer from June three, twenty twenty-two to August eighteen, twenty twenty-two on the north wing. The south wing is scheduled to be phased in. We're going to be doing those rooms, a couple of rooms at a time. So having teachers transition down to some of the new classrooms that we've got while their rooms are being done, and then we'll transition them back. So it's going to be a lot of moving parts, a lot of movement happening in the high school as we work through this, through the magnitude of this project. The Phase Three, the renovations of the existing office space, those four new classrooms will take place in the fall, so August eighteen, twenty twenty-two. Hoping to have those spaces completed by the middle of September of twenty twenty-two, so next fall as well. And that would provide us with the four new spaces for classrooms right across the hall through the. And then the last piece, the other large section, the cafeteria, the two large sections, cafeteria renovation over the summer. So that would be complete, the work will be done between June six, twenty twenty-two. It will be completed by August eighteen, twenty twenty-two. And then the last piece, the Phase Two of flooring, that work is scheduled for the second week of June, twenty twenty-two, through the second week of August of twenty twenty-two. So really, the bulk of the work at the high school will be completed over the summer. There will be some transitioning for classrooms into some of the new spaces as we go. And then the other significant part of the project, the repurposing of the existing office space will be the last piece they pull together in the high school project, and that should be completed a year from now. For this first phase of construction. But again, I just thought it was nice to be able to see it, see the spaces with some plan, guidelines.
Will anything be changed in here?
I'm sorry?
Will anything be changed in here?
Nothing of significance has called for in the space right now.
I would disagree. We can talk about that later.
Well, I mean, you know, we, we're doing things. We opened the site seven months ago last year to review all the curtains. You know, there are other projects that we need to have done, so we've got our priorities on those projects.
We need wider seats.
So a lot of the presentations are tough, so thank you to everybody. I want a better timeline, but I know it's not today. It's, it's eight p.m. So thank you, Ron.
Question. I think you answered it already, but I'm going to ask, because I'll be asked about it. The greenhouse, is that one of the auxiliary things that'll be done in that twenty-three to twenty-four year?
No, the greenhouse is going to be something that's going to go as soon as we, you know, we will use either general fund dollars on that project or we'll go with the site seven. So it's a go as soon as we find the right space.
Thank you.
Just pretty impressive the way you're able to go over that. It's very clear and clearly laid out for us to understand. It looks very organized. It's, you know, GME apparently is, you know, helping considerably in making all these arrangements and plans, I'm sure you and Chris are involved. You know, I, I hope all the parts and pieces get here, the timeframes that you're talking about. We still, we're working ahead of it. As a board and as a district, but, you know, congratulations on what, on what this looks like. Like I said, very, very clear and laid out, easy for anybody to understand that much.
Yeah, when you put it on a map, it's much easier to make a connection to the windows of time. Because otherwise, when you start throwing gates out and spaces out, it all just becomes
I'm just curious where, where someone could view these if they were interested in what's going on with the timeline or just trying to gain better understanding of the renovations.
Yeah, these are hot off the press, so we've been doing regular updates. So we've got a location on the, on the website for, for construction, dates and information. So, and yes, I'm going to get that added next week, but we'll be able to upload those down.
Well, that's great. No, I think they're extremely helpful, so thank you. You know, the new forward part, flexible agenda. So that puts us back to action. And for our action items tonight, our first action item is in matter of a post-session for item twenty point twenty-one point zero three. And I would entertain a motion for.
I would move to accept the recommendation of suspension through the end of first semester with the consideration for readmittance being tied in with counselor appointments and behavioral plans. We'll put that together and make this on the.
Second.
And my, my heart definitely goes out to the family, and I hope that, hopefully, this support, the support will provide a real point of success. Yes.
I agree.
All right. Having your session, I'll call the vote. Vice President Shoffner?
Yes.
Secretary Slager?
Yes.
Judge Gilmore?
Yes.
Justice Bader Hite?
Yes.
Justice Rebar?
Yes.
Justice Bowser?
Yes.
President Reed?
Yes.
Motion carries as presented. Second action item for tonight is procedural in nature to, for the NSBA advocacy institute attendance, where Misty Bowser has agreed to attend on behalf of the board. So I would entertain a motion for as presented. So.
So move.
Support? All, all together, support, support. Any discussion? Having done, Vice President Shoffner?
Yes.
Secretary Slager?
Yes.
Judge Gilmore?
Yes.
Justice Bader Hite?
Yes.
Justice Rebar?
Yes.
Justice Bowser?
Yes.
President Reed?
Yes.
And I've been waiting to say this, Misty goes to Washington.
Thank you for your work.
You're welcome. I'm excited you put it up on the page, sent the information back, and I'm going to have our voice heard. Okay, so that brings us to, now we're, we're winding up here, communication to the board of education. We do have some virtual training that is available to us from MASP, December sixth. And we don't always agree with everything they say, but we take what works for our district and we can leave the rest. So it is a resource that is in front of us. So we give that, that work's spread with schedules. And. That's all.
I, I just was going to share.
Your.
Yeah. I know several of us went, so I know I brought my notes with me, but I won't go.
Oh.
I won't go into much detail. I was hoping Chris would be here because one of the CBAs I attended was How to Survive Budget Shortfalls. So.
You and Chris can have a private meeting.
I'm just so grateful for Chris.
Yes. Well, I, well, I do wish you was here, because I did want to point out, you know, a lot of what we talked about. And I did, I did learn some things and I took notes, but by and large, really, I felt well-prepared going into it. I felt like Chris has done a good job of, of educating us as a board and laying things out and, you know, has already done a lot of the things that they talked about. So, yes, thankful for him and the team. I feel like we're in very good shape. So that was an encouragement. And yeah, went, went to a couple of other sessions I found helpful, but I just wanted to, I know Shannon shared a little bit during gratitude about Brandon Fleming's presentation. I, I just have to say, I was really blown away too. I, I was, just wasn't, it was a morning session, eating breakfast. It's like I wasn't ready to be blown away yet. I just felt out of nowhere, the three of us were there, Shannon, Misty and I, but we didn't, we were totally in different areas, so I didn't even know Shannon was even there, but.
I was virtual.
Oh, virtual, okay, okay. Okay. But yes, it was just very incredible, so I, I would, would encourage others to check out the book a little bit. But yeah, just wanted to put a plug in for that as well, because I just thought he did a wonderful job of presenting and regardless of the role in education or just coming alongside students, it was a, was a great message and, and just good reminders, you know, for us as, as board members, so.
Can you share with the audience the title?
Oh, yes, it's called "Miseducated Memoir by Brandon P. Fleming." And now second one, which Tracy and Shannon both have said. One of the class, and then we also had a speaker, Colonel Athens, phenomenal, ten children yes, he only has one wife, they're all his, he made that right away. He was fantastic in talking, he's a retired Colonel from the Marine Corps, and just talking about, one thing that he said that was really, really, really pertinent is just with the three Cs, just competent, courageous, and compassionate, and you just constantly hold those three in everything that you do, making decisions and also being compassionate with, with everybody that you're talking to, everybody has a story. A class that I took, and actually Steve from SET-SET taught it, would talk about cyber security. And so like he said, he has had the most breaches in two weeks than what he had in two years. So he said especially now they're presenting themselves as construction vendors, and so they're, he didn't say what school it was, anyways, there's a district locally that had paid a vendor twice because they asked that we're going electronic now because of COVID, like please predict your affirmation and, and the bottom half you debit and, but then also too is just they come across as vendors and so like staff, like, there'll be like phishing techniques where this, that the school district can do to kind of like test to make sure your employees are not clicking on. And then he said that one of the SET-SET employees actually clicked on one because it looked like it came from an employee that was there and said that there was a dog in the parking lot and she clicked on it. And he's like, it's so embarrassing, but even we make that mistake. And so just a friendly reminder, and then especially with us looking for, you know, our team departments kind of changing a little bit, just to remind our employees, like, do not, and then we already banked up our data, everything like that. He said, I talked to him afterwards and he's like, you guys are really, really good. And I'm like, ah, but I just thought I'd double chat, and he said, no, 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 because then he'd pull things up there. You guys are great. I will say that in these, some of those classes and then sharing, because obviously it's boards from all over the state of Michigan, and we have a really, really good board. I mean, some of the stories that some of these board members were saying, my goodness sakes, I, people quitting and then just even just, not even communicating. And I felt really blessed in the superintendent, you know, with Mr. Smith, and the board that has, it's just how we've worked all together and agreed in that we think that we are respectful and we share and we're open-minded. And I just, I really, really appreciate that. And I would say, we were the minority there, and there's a lot of trouble waters out there with other boards, so I just want to thank all of you who worked so well together with all of us. So that was my biggest.
Yeah, and I would, I would second that too, because, you know, we have all had a difficult almost two years now, and certainly a lot of things that have, have been very challenging. But I agree that so many, so many districts and, and such, such a, just heartbreaking stories and the kind of, kind of tensions that they're dealing with are just nothing to what, what, what we have faced working together. So, yes, I would echo that and say thank you as well.
And I, I have a little bit of a legislative update, but that's all change. Last week, so I'll just, I'll just email you guys. Everything I have written on my.
That says it all right there.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Uh, Misty and Tracy, I appreciate your guys' insight on the board relation there. You know, having been on this board for many years, and Shannon, you, you know as well, I would agree with you guys, you know, this is fun. Very nice to have a board that's respectful, open to listening and respecting. And to your point, you know, we might not always agree, but at least we're, we're trying to come to common ground, which is always a difficult task at this level. So thank you guys for that. I do appreciate it. Thank you Scott for patience with us and times of disagreement, so, but yes, I think that we all work together very well.
I, I, I agree with that. And I just want to add that, I think even when we disagree, that we know that each other are coming from the best place, from, from a good place in our heart, and we're not trying to push any like alternate agenda or anything, that we're all coming to it from different perspectives and we respect each other for that. And I, I really do appreciate that as well.
And I think Shannon, to that point, you know, we're, we're grounded with caring about kids. I think all of us agree on that. It's, it's really that sight of what is best for, for the kids. Thank you guys.
So remember that when I gave you a little bag with some rocks that you have to build those carons. You can't build carons without creativity and patience and perseverance and a little friction, right? If all the rocks were smooth, they'll never stack upon one another.
Except if they still have them.
Friction is, is really important to make us stronger and making us, and making us better. No, I just want to share on behalf of the staff and on behalf of the students, just thanking you for your dedication and service to this. Because we don't get that. There are four thousand voices echoing, retweeting to you for the work and your effort and your support.
Thank you too, all the American trials.
Okay. That ends communication, and our next board meeting is September thirteenth. So any, any not legislative changes that, that we're here, that's board meeting. With that, we will stand adjourned at eight twelve.